Town meeting called to order. Please take a seat. Corn being present, I call our 2019 special town meeting to order. Years ago, I introduced our voluntary pledge of allegiance. It is our tradition now. Citizens recite the pledge. This falls squarely within the moderator's right to regulate the proceedings. The moderator's discretion, but ingrained now as part of our tradition. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and join us if you wish. Mr. Carl Keener, please lead us.
Pledge. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you, Carl Keener. Please be seated. Good evening, fellow citizens of Southampton. Welcome to our 2019 special town meeting. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. Thank you for your continued support. It's an honor to be elected your town moderator. To serve you is a privilege. Your positive feedback encourages and is most valued by me. Your negative feedback alerts me to the fact I am doing my job. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Cemetery Superintendent of our three cemeteries, and East Hampton Media Board Member. I am the sole committee for the rebirth so far of our old Home Day celebration in Kona Park and various Southampton venues on Saturday, September 14, 2019. There is no compensation for any of these privileges. I publicly thank Carl Keener for his fourth successful year as our deputing moderator. Without objection, Ms. Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, will be elected to be town clerk for Southampton's town meetings. Congratulations. Here we know objections. It's unanimous. Mr. Dalton, will you please stand and be sworn in? Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, our legislative branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed, the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. I'll read the warrant. Town of Southampton, warrant for special town meeting, February 5, 2019. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the town of Southampton, County of Hampshire, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the cafeteria, gymnasium, William E. Norris School, 34 Palmory Meadow Road, Southampton, Mass. on Tuesday, February 5, 2019, at 7:00 Warrant returned, Town of Southampton, pursuant to the within warrant. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southampton by posting an attested copy at the Southampton Town Hall and five or more other places designated for the posting of such notices 14 days before holding said meeting. Signed by Michael Goyette, January 17, 2019. Me, we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton culture for those who have moved on ahead since we have last met. Thank you. Tonight, our special town meeting is being recorded as well as sent out live on public access channel 191. Thank you, Ryan Arnold and East Hampton Media. A tribute to former town moderator Harrison Gregg. I love the idea, that's not his voice, of participatory democracy, the right to speak one's mind, the right to petition one's government for redress of grievances, or simply to bring forward a good idea that might benefit the community as a whole. I love the reality of everyone in town, or at least those who care to do so, coming together to talk things out and share responsibility for the actions that will be taken in their name. Thank you. The executive branch of our town government, select board, finance committee, treasurer, collector, accountant, clerk, town administrator, have worked hard on the articles for this special town meeting. Their work is done. Although these members sit up front, by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote or say tonight than any of you in our special town meeting. Existence of our elected finance committee as an advisory group does not relieve the rest of you from thinking and asking questions for yourselves. Warrant. The articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warns the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. I continue to host an annual televised town moderator, town meeting information session live under Town's Public Access Station. Open meeting law does not apply to town meetings nor moderator, yet I do post the notice of the town moderator, town meeting article information center. It's a forum to elicit more information about vague articles. The script for the session contains the motions for the articles which are presented at the town meeting. Works well. Investment of an hour or so makes our actual town meeting smoother from your perspective. All proponents of articles are invited to attend, but we discuss only procedure issues and not the merits or lack thereof. We take up the articles in the order they appear in the warrant and clarify which source of funds and the proposed amounts. As moderator puts me a notice as to where to expect debate and amendments. Moderator's rules, not town council's legal opinion, apply while our town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in aisles or hallways. Quorum, the essence. The necessary ingredients of our town meeting only requires the presence of our town clerk, town moderator, a properly executed warrant with return of service, and in Southampton, a quorum of 50 people in accordance with our town bylaw. Duties of a moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully, impartially, and consistently, regardless of who you are, not to assure any particular outcome. I am here to ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have the opportunity and to ensure the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides' need will be heard on each article. Moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. The moderator leaves the outcome to the fully informed voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town proceedings. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town, so if your experience, your inexperience here holds you back, allow me to walk you through the process tonight. Any one of you may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to the mic where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of voters, your responsibility, to be the legislative branch of our town government for tonight's articles. You have the power to make laws and the power of the purse. Tonight, you exercise your freedom of speech. You all have one single vote, yes or no, for each article. Speaking and participating at town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. Ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. It's important to set ground rules early then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislator, subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth's laws. It needs rules, one of my duties as your moderator. Why? Simple, efficiency is important, so the business of the meeting can be accomplished more accurately, with fewer errors and less waste of time. More importantly, the protection of the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs, and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time. A handbook, parliamentary law, great reference book. Organic process, as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Town meeting works if you want it to work, not for you alone, but for the whole community. Tonight, we proceed with what we have since 1773, when town meeting named our then-village Southampton. Motions are read out loud either by the select board or elected community preservation chair or a citizen petition article by its author. When there is no reading of a motion hurried, any voter may rise to the occasion and read a motion. Once a motion is read, I have asked and received the second, then I invite a pro and then a con statement. The rights to speak, these rules of the quorum are unique to town meeting. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us. Merits or lack thereof of the motion. I allow, I always allow, a speaker to speak their mind. No speaker has ever been denied to speak. Any accusations of the contrary are plain wrong and not supported by the data. Yes, speak your heart and mind, not read what others have written. This ties the moderator's hands to maintain an open balance town meeting that is fair to all and it interferes with the town moderator and the execution of town meeting duties. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order, out of scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator, that's when the speaker is directed to sit down. I don't use a gavel, which certainly may drive the point more dramatically. I do not want drama. I will not allow a voter to take a town meeting hostage. Limits. Plan tonight is for you to speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand and address me and not the audience. Experience demonstrates well, our minds rarely change after the first five minutes of a speech, and no more than two times on any article except to correct an error, answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise, to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition. Unlike many so-called public comment sessions at a town meeting, when discussion is over, we all express our opinion in a way that generally, genuinely counts by voting. So no need to express opinions with applause on various positions as we go along. Thank you. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion, that is, to legislate all in a civilized way. No comments of a personal nature, no naming of names are to be made by you. There is never any occasion for you to address another in the second person. Will not be permitted. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning. Let this be our first warning. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the mic up front and stand in line to be recognized by the moderator. First come, first heard. I will only recognize speakers standing at the microphone unless a point of order. Address the moderator, state your name, and address clearly. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator, and do not speak directly to other voters. This is meant to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. No salesmanship, no theatrics, no body language. Only content, please. Thank you. The conduct of the town meeting is the moderator's responsibility as authorized by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 37, Subchapter 15 and 17. I have a lot to read, about two-thirds. I don't feel like reading at all. It's probably a page and a half. Anyone needs to call the question, they have to call it from the mic and not in the audience. They need to call it immediately and not after they spoke, then add it to the last thing they say. If I feel that some of you are still waiting answers or clarification on a motion under an article, I will not allow the call, the question, and I will allow you to hear the questions or the answers to the questions you seek. Once we, and I may simply say that it's time to vote. There was a lot on two-thirds. Presenters, to quote moderator Jim Pistrang, "Town meeting requires work from all participants, especially on the part of the presenters of the articles. A poorly constructed and poorly presented article is far more likely to fail at a town meeting. To be successful, presenters must understand and clearly communicate the details, reasons, and implications of their proposals. Anyone unsatisfied with a lack of information for an article may make a motion to adjourn the town meeting to tomorrow night or to a town certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information." Those seated up front may remain seated and use your tables' microphones to answer questions. Our preappointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, the count resumes for a complete and accurate count to be announced out loud so we all can hear at the same time. They count front to back. Town meeting tonight will either be adjourned to a time certain or be dissolved. Our special town meeting is scheduled to go to 10 o'clock and may continue with you voting to continue for this evening. I have reserved the next three evenings in my calendar in case. Move the order of articles as there, if there is a clearly stated compelling reason to move an article to an earlier position for consideration, I will ask for objection. If there is objection voiced, we then await a motion and see if it secures the vote required. Any reasons to move? Thank you. Simply because someone states something, it does not make it true. Majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. May I hear a motion for Article 1, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept General Law, Chapter 64, and Section 3, to allow a 3% local tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town of Southampton, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? You have the articles, you have the summaries, and you have the motions in your hands. We are voting on the motion, not the summary. Who would like to speak on this article, please? We start off with an advocate for the article, and then I immediately will ask for anybody who is against the article, if there is anybody to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demon from the Planning Board, and on...
Address. Street address?
216 Palmory Meadow.
Thank you.
We held a public hearing on December 5, the Planning Board, after being duly published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and it was closed that...
Got to get a little closer so they can hear.
The meeting was closed that evening, and it was approved to forward all these marijuana amendments, including this particular one, for the 3% local tax on the sale of marijuana or products within the town.
Thank you. Does anybody want to speak in opposition to this article? Anybody want to speak at all? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 2, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws by adding an article, Marijuana, Section 1, Limitations on Adult Use, Retail Establishments, set forth in Article 2 of the warrant for February 5, 2019, special town meeting, or take any action, any other action relative thereto.
Those, or take any other action relative thereto can be left out of any reading since we're here at the meeting. That's to tweak things before, for a town meeting. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on the motion for Article 2?
Once again, Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board, at its public hearing, December 5, approved this article as well and the other amendments. This particular one was filed, so it could get on the town warrant, and as you'll see going forward, the amended version of that, that was edited by Town Council.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition to the motion on Article 2?
Margaret Walden, Foma Road. I simply have a question, and that is, how many package stores do we have in Southampton?
Good question. I know the answer, but, um, five?
Three.
Three. I'm looking at his fingers.
Four.
Four.
It's four.
Pure foods, marijuana.
The question was, how many package stores, liquor stores do we have? And the answer is four. Yes.
Hello. Jennifer Manganielli, 14 Walcott Road. I was just curious how the 50% was brought up, was determined. I didn't know if anyone could speak to how that decision was made for this article.
How the percentage was arrived?
Correct.
We were given the formula as was presented to us by our consultants, and it could have been anywhere from 10, 20, 30, 40, 50% of your establishments, and we arrived at that as a board. Board voted for the 50% number.
Great, thank you.
Unless my colleague Jim has any other comment he could make to that.
Jim? You can, you're answering your question, so you can stay at your seat to answer questions.
I just wanted to clarify, since you're going to answer this, I was kind of just looking for the reasoning behind it, you know, why 50%? Why not match the number of package stores or alcohol, places you can buy alcohol, or why it wasn't less? Just, just the reasoning behind it. Thank you.
I believe the highest, we can go, we, there's no limit on what we can allow. I know that the CCC Committee, the Cannabis Control Commission, regulates, it has to be a minimum of 20% or it'll be kicked back to us. So we knew that was our floor, was 20%, and the board discussed it at our meeting, and we decided for 50%. We had no other public input at that time.
Thank you. I might add, too, that given the retail space we have in business districts, kind of would minimize how many we could have also, since we do not have a large business district. That answer your question? Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote under the motion for Article 2. Simple majority, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 2 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that town vote to amend the town bylaws by adding a new Article 39, Marijuana, Section 2, Prohibition on Public Consumption of Marijuana or Tetrahydrocannabinol as set forth in Article 3 of the warrant for the February 5, 2019, special town meeting.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak in favor of this motion?
Once again, the Planning Board approved this article as well at December 5, 2018, public hearing.
Thank you. Who'd like to speak in opposition?
Ben Hogan, 73 Gilbert Road. I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 3, to read with the exception of prescribed medical marijuana or THC, and the reason is not to penalize any citizens who are legally prescribed marijuana or THC.
We need all amendments to be in writing duplicate. You have it? So the amendment motion is to make a motion to amend Article 3 with the exception of prescribed medical marijuana or tetrahydrocannabinol. The reason is not to penalize any citizens who are legally prescribed marijuana or THC. So we have a motion of amendment. Who would second the amendment? We have motion and a seconded for the amendment. We will talk on the amendment only. We will vote on the amendment. Once the amendment is voted on, we will return to the motion under the article. You want to make your case?
Yeah, Ben Hogan, 73 Gilbert Road. I mean, as a Army vet and a current first responder...
A little closer.
As a Army vet and a first responder, I know there's a big issue with PTSD in the communities, and it's proven that prescribed medical marijuana has reduced suicide rate, has reduced the opiate epidemic specifically with veterans and first responders. So I would not want to make a, make someone who's suffering from PTSD a criminal for utilizing prescribed medical marijuana in a public setting. Not to say that they can drive vehicles while using it, but if they're at their home in their front yard, or if they're driving in their, if someone's driving them in a car, I just don't want to exclude them and criminalize them for seeking treatment.
Thank you. Anybody would like to speak in opposition of the amendment?
John Martin, 106 Clerks Street. Just have a question for, for Ben Hogan. If it's legal anywhere that basically they can smoke cigarettes, that would be in your car, anywhere cigarettes are legal. Is that correct? Am I understanding the amendment?
With today's technologies, there's plenty different ways to ingest marijuana, THC, or the CIBD oil without smoking it. You can, there's, I mean, there's pill forms, there's many different forms to receive it medically.
May I answer your question? The question is, they can smoke it also.
I mean, the same laws would still apply, though, if you're prescribed.
Well, to answer his question, he wants to...
So if you can't, if you're allowed to smoke it for your prescription, it doesn't mean you can smoke it in a restaurant or in a hospital, or the same laws under the Health Department that restrict open cigarettes still apply to...
[inaudible].
Yes. Yes, yeah, but I was talking about like the pill form and different, different means of ingesting it.
He wants to clarify where it can be smoked.
Maureen Crowe, Nature Lane. So I'm just wondering, from a legal standpoint, does that mean that anybody that has a prescription has to have it with them in the event that they get stopped and they're in public? So I'm just wondering about enforcing this.
Question about, do, does the person carry a prescription around? Anybody have an answer in the back? This is teamwork, after all, tonight. So if I may paraphrase the question, if you didn't hear it, because the speakers are lousy in the back of the room, does the person need to carry their prescription with them?
Ian Ellingsworth, interim Chief of Police. Yes, they do.
Yes?
Ian Ellingsworth, interim Chief of Police. Yes, they do. They'd have to carry it with them.
Okay. Thank you. May I answer your question? Maureen? Yep, good. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Jim Palermo, 68 Glendale Road. While I'm in favor of the amendment generally, I think it should be more carefully worded, and I would suggest that maybe we not vote on it tonight until the wording is worked out appropriately, perhaps with input from the police department.
Then you can make an amendment to the amendment. That's legal. So if you have some grammatical corrections, I will accept your amendment to the amendment.
I don't feel competent to make the amendment, because I don't know enough about it. But as Mr. Hogan pointed out, there are all various forms of marijuana. You know, in different, you know, brownies, and pills, and smoking. And I just would hope that anything we pass would be sufficiently specific to, to cover all those instances.
Mr. Hogan, on your amendment, thank you. This seems pretty inclusive, with the exception of prescribed medical marijuana. And that is in all forms? I believe somebody was trying to-
Yeah, I mean, any, like medically prescribed, so I mean, whether it's oil, pill form, or inhalation form, whether it's vaping, or smoke, I don't, I don't know how much more specific you can get, because you're still have to do the same laws.
Do you want to make an amendment to the amendment?
I want to keep it the same.
In all forms?
Sure, in all forms.
This is the way it works. We're going to be talking only on the amendment to the amendment to the motion. So I only want to hear is, in all forms acceptable? And we're voting on and discussing only that. Then we're going to go to the amendment.
Dan Pellegrini, 76 Crooked Edge Road. I'd like to call a vote, call a question.
I have people behind. I, I'm going to deny it. There's people standing behind you. It's a good, this is where I had that two-page thing I was going to read, and I covered it all, sir.
I'm just trying to move along.
Yeah, I, I'll move it along.
My name is Lawrence Mace, Hillside Meadows Drive. I, along with penalties, you're instituting a $300 fine.
Well, we're talking about only in all forms. That's all we're going to talk about. We have to talk about the amendment to the amendment to the motion.
Would you let me know when I can come back?
Oh, you stay right there. Anybody have anything to say about in all forms?
Bill Walden, 21 Foma Road. One concern I have is the possibility, by allowing a wider use of marijuana for medical purposes, might be-
We're not, we're not, that's good. But we're only talking about in all forms. That was an amendment to an amendment. Ah, good. We're on the same page. So we're going to vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment in all, by the way, if you need to say something, you don't need to be recognized. Go right up to the mic, stand in line.
Yeah, I don't mean to complicate things, but it wasn't so much the forms, but really to articulate where-
That's not what we're talking about now.
Right, but I was the one that suggested-
So that's for the next, that's, wait a few minutes. We're going to talk and vote on in all forms.
It'll be two, point of order, sir.
Sir, we're, we're going to be voting on three words. Sorry, this is how it works. We're going to vote on the amendment to the amendment. All those in favor of in all forms be added to the amendment to the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please by saying nay. It passes by majority, and the amendment is now open for discussion to the motion. Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, no, go ahead, I haven't spoken.
I just wanted to add that trying to enforce $300 fines for whatever that means is arbitrary, ill-defined, and meaningless. So I would say, any mention of any fines regarding any of this legislation should be struck, because without a defined, specific criteria, whether it's doing breathalyzers with alcohol, or whatever the meaning of this is, would the smell of marijuana be a $300 fine? Or something that smelled like marijuana? I'd just say it's preposterous. Strike the fines until you have a better understanding of how to quantify what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd kind of like to remind everyone that this is a work in progress, as you know. This is the first time this type of bylaw's come before us. This was a model that's been adopted throughout Western Mass and a lot of towns that the state put out, and it was tweaked by each town. Now, being so new, there are going to be some, some gaps in it, obviously, by some of the comments made here tonight. But absent passing any of these bylaws tonight means that we are without a moratorium or any regulations on marijuana establishments in Southampton, because those expired December 31st of 2018. So if this, these articles do not get passed tonight, then we're not covered by anyone that could come in, file an application to open a business, and we wouldn't have any regulation on the books for that whatsoever. And that's what we leave ourselves exposed to. So we know that by getting over the hump on these articles and bylaws, that over time, and in very short order, we can then go back and amend them again, and bring them to town meeting, if people show up for public hearings and voice their opinions, so we can take that into consideration and rewrite some of the language.
Jim Palermo, Glendale Road. I support the passage, and I think that what the last speaker said is great. The only question I have is, I don't know where it would be lawful for a person with a prescription for marijuana to use it in public. That's what I was object, you know, the point I was trying to raise before. Somebody said, "Will you ever can smoke cigarettes?", but that was never incorporated into any kind of a motion. So where may and may, one may not use marijuana in public, has not been defined.
Thank you. Paul, you want to take a crack at that? Or we accept that it hasn't been defined, we'll listen to you. And then we're going to vote.
Tom Livingston, Palmero Meadow Road. I just wanted to make sure that what we're voting on is the exclusion of medical marijuana from this article. Is that correct? Okay. And, and Mr. Hogan had spoken about being able to smoke it on your property, in your driveway. I mean, that's not a public establishment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to vote. All those in favor of the amendment as presented on the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment, signify by saying nay. The amendment to the motion passes by majority. Now we're going to vote on the amended motion. All those in favor of the amended motion under Article Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Three passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Quigley Road as a public way, as shown on the plan entitled "Quigley Road, Prepared for the Southampton Planning Board and Recorded in the Hampshire County of Deeds Plan Book 237, Page 29, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift the fee to and/or easements in Quigley Road for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Southampton, and any drainage, utility, access, and/or other easements related thereto. All as shown on the plan.
Ed, was that the amended motion?
Yes, it was.
Yes. For those at home and with papers in there, we decided to tweak the motion, and it may not exactly read the way you have it, but it falls under the four corners of the article. I have a motion made or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this motion under Article Four? Street acceptance.
Once again, the Planning Board had approved this to be accepted back in January of this year. Quigley Road is also known as Pellegrini Estates Subdivision, and it passed all muster with our board and engineers that did a walkthrough. And there's some minor details to be worked out, and some issues that are quite minor, that the Highway Superintendent brought to our attention. But for all intents and purposes, it has been constructed according to plans, and the Planning Board unanimously recommends that it be accepted as a town road.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all? Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four, the amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for Article Four passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by, one, amending Section Five, Table One, Use Regulations, Wholesale Transportation and Industrial Uses, to add the new adult-use marijuana establishment uses as set forth in the amended Attachment A heretofore. And, two, deleting the current Section 18, Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments, and replacing it with a new Section 18, Adult-Use Marijuana Establishments, as set forth in the amended Attachment A heretofore, or take any other action relative heretofore.
Motion made or a second?
Second.
Who would like to address the motion under Article Five?
Are you tired of me yet?
Yeah.
Once again, the Planning Board approved these motions and this article, similar to the ones previously mentioned.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all? Or ask questions?
April West, 54 Strong Road. I'm on the town website, and I'm looking at our bylaws that are posted, and it doesn't, probably isn't a complete set of zoning bylaws. So I have two questions. Under what zonings will these marijuana establishments be allowed? And will they be allowed by permit? Just allowed during, you know, in specific zonings? Or will they all require a special permit?
I know the answers, but I can't answer.
On the use regulations, on page, the first page of the amendment to Article Five, Attachment A, shows the commercial areas, CV, CH, marijuana retailer, and also all the industrial categories. The principal uses are allowed there, and marijuana transporter, testing laboratory, and the retailer, but it's all our commercial districts, with the exception of the village.
Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Jim Labrie, 66 Gun Road. I just want to make it clear to everybody here tonight, that the Planning Board held the public hearing on, was it December 5th, I believe? And we approved the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana bylaws. They then since went to Town Council, and Town Council had some minor tweaks to it. And those tweaks came back after we were able to get it into this warrant article. So we have it as an amendment in the back. That's why the flyers were passed out. But there were amendment changes made by Town Council, and nothing major. The content was pretty much the same.
Moderator, approve the amendments, the changes.
We received, the Planning Board received a few emails regarding some of the uses and the regulations regarding it. And I'd like to assure everybody that when someone brings an application forward for these retail establishments, or medical marijuana, or growing, they have to go into the site plan review process, which is very stringent, and conditions that we can impose on them. And one of the emails I received was about odor. And odor is listed as one of the site plan requirements, that the applicant has to show mitigation, and give us plans, not only for that, but for security, for lighting, the hours of operation, no ingestion or smoking on the premises. So we can impose, whether it be the Zoning Board of Appeals, or in this case, the Planning Board, we can impose regulations to our, our benefit, and the town's benefit, to minimize any impacts that may, may come forward.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak? Seeing none, we're going to vote. We need two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Is that a nay? Yes? I'm sorry. Any, all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. We need a count. Counters, please. This is required for the Attorney General for Boston. We need an exact count for two-thirds, if it isn't unanimous. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please raise your cards. The counters will count from front to back. From front to back. This section, you can put your cards down. That section, keep them up.
36.
And put your hands down.
50.
50. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Unanimous? Is there anybody? Nobody? I'm hearing nobody. Any opposed to this, please raise your card. Seeing none, I declare it unanimous. 86 to 0. May I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by, one, amending Section Five, Table One, Use Regulations, Retail and Services Uses, to add, start quotes, "off-site medical marijuana dispensary", O-M-M-D, end quote, and, start quote, "registered marijuana dispensary", R-M-D, end quote, as set forth in amended Attachment B heretofore. And, two, add a new Section 19, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, R-M-D, and off-site medical marijuana dispensary, as set forth in amended Attachment B heretofore.
Thank you.
or take any other action thereto.
That doesn't need to be said once we're on the floor. Thank you. We have a motion made for Article Six. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address it, please?
Once again, approved by the Planning Board, December 5th.
Okay. Anyone in opposition? This requires two. Anybody else wishes to speak, pro or con, please come up to the mic. Yes?
Margaret Walden, 21 Fomer Road. I would like to call your attention, in Article Six, Attachment B, the end of 1910, it says the town of Blanford, and this is not Blanford.
Ah, we, very good. We have a motion to amend? Second motion made and seconded. All in favor of being Southampton, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, it's amended. Right, anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, we need two-thirds. All those in favor of the amended motion under Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Genanamous, the amended motion for Article Six passes. May I hear a motion for Article Seven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a total of $1,276.62 from free cash for three unpaid bills from fiscal year 2018.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Vicki? And Margaret Walden, thank you very much for spotting that. Teamwork. Okay, we're on Article Seven now.
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. These three bills were brought to my attention after I closed the 2018 books from the Highway Department, the Police Department, and the Fire Department, where they didn't actually receive these bills until later on after that date. But we do need to pay our bills.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Any questions? Anyone on comment? Seeing none, we're going to vote. Motion under Article Seven, nine-tenths majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously, meeting our nine-tenths requirement. No abstaining until meeting, thank you. You don't need to announce it, I appreciate it though, thank you. Motion for Article Eight, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $106,845.55 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Back in 2015, the Select Board established a policy on what we would do with free cash, once it was certified by the Department of Revenue, and as stated in the warrant, thirty-five percent is going to go to capital, which is $106,845.55. Our free cash for the end of fiscal year 18 was certified as $305,273, so.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, will vote on the motion under Article Eight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion on Article Eight passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Nine, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $30,527.30 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits account.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? There you are.
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmery Meadow Road. This is also part of that policy the Select Board had established in 2015, where ten percent of our free cash certification goes into our OPEB, which is state-required.
Thank you.
Not the percentage, but the state is requiring us to put money into that fund.
Anyone in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article Nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Nine passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Ten, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $91,581.90 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. This would be the last piece of that policy that was approved by the Select Board in 2015 for thirty percent of our certified free cash to go into operating stabilization.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Any questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article Ten. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Genanamous. Motion for Article Eleven, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $8,000 to the town hall building expense account from free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Good evening. The budget for the town hall expenses was approved at $21,987.
Oh, yeah, get a little closer to the mic. That's Ed Gibson, our town administrator.
The budget for the town hall expenses was approved at $21,987, of which $14,400 we hold in maintenance contracts. This year alone, we have either spent or encumbered about $8,900 just to repair our boilers and our air conditioning systems, which have been unforeseen. And currently, we have $6,700 currently contracted or owed for the remainder of the year. So we are requesting $8,000 to be transferred from free cash to at least meet what we know as our contracted amounts through the end of the fiscal year. It's, we have seen a number of system failures which have been unusual.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, will vote on the motion under Article Eleven, simple majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Twelve, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $1,000 from assessor, admin, assistant wage account to the certification stipends account to compensate the principal assessor for attaining state certification.
Thank you. Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Back in 2017, annual town meeting, the town voted to approve the statutes that are within mass general laws to give the financial people of the town's assessors, town clerk, accountant, and treasurer-collector a $1,000 stipend for their certifications, which is a fairly rigorous test-taking and classes they must take in order to pass those exams to get the certification.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, will vote on the motion under Article Twelve. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Twelve passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $14,208.29 from the police communication wages account to the police department, police equipment maintenance expense account, to replace the seven-year-old server, along with the new backup system and antivirus software.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Ian Ellingsworth, intern police chief. Earlier this month, the department was awarded, earlier this month, the department was awarded an incentive grant specifically designated for-
Get a little closer.
Specifically designated to communication wages. So that grant will assist with this transfer of money.
Anybody in opposition? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, will vote. Motion under Article Thirteen, simple majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion on Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Fourteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $4,286.29 from the police education incentive account to the police chief's salary account to pay out the vacation time for the retired police chief.
Thank you. Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll have Vicki speak.
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The current interim police chief, there would not be enough money in this salary line item to pay his salary out through the end of the year, because the current, the previous chief had retired and we needed to pay out his vacation. And because the current interim chief's salary is encompassed whole, we would not have to pay a portion of his education incentive that he would have gotten previously. So that's why we're transferring within the department to cover what we paid out to the previous chief, so we could pay the current interim chief his entire salary for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Questions, answers? Seeing none, will vote. Motion under Article Fourteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Fourteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Fifteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $34,000 to public access television account, said some to be appropriated from revenues received from Charter/spectrum from the town's contract with them.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. In previous years, we had accounted for how we paid PEG access, where it was in a special fund, where we had to appropriate those funds each year, every time we went to pay the bills. And in previous years, before we negotiated a new contract with Charter, our percentage was at one percent. While we increased the percentage of what we would pay to ECAT that we would collect from Charter customers, increased to two percent, we needed to increase the amount that we would be paying ECAT during this fiscal year for 19, which was not budgeted for, because it was based on previous year's actuals, when in fact, this year's actuals will be twice as much. We receive a check from Charter, which is collected on everyone's bills, and then East Hampton Media will bill us that same amount that Charter gives us, so it's a wash.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, will vote. Motion under Article Fifteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. May I hear an article, hello, may I hear a motion for Article Sixteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $1,900 from Hampshire Council of Government's expense account, and $1,000 from the annual audit expense account to the Board of Health Sharps program expense account, to fund the program through the end of the fiscal year.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Please, Ed? Vicki Beecher. Thanks, Vicki.
Vicki Morrow, Palmery Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The Sharps program was budgeted at $3,000 for FY19, which isn't enough to cover the program for the entire year. Due to the constraints that we had with 19 and the override, that was one of the budgets that was cut. But because the program is so widely used, we need some more money to fund this in order to keep it going for the rest of the fiscal year, so we don't find needles on the streets and all that kind of stuff. And so, because Hampshire Council of Governments has not charged us this year, we are taking money from that account, and our audit is a little bit less this year. We are taking money from that account to cover this, so we're within the same budget that we passed at a town meeting in May.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? All questions or comments?
Maureen Groh, Nate Sherolane. I just have a question. I'm looking at the budget for the Sharps program, and it has for FY17, $3,400, for FY18, $2,900, and then budgeted, like you said, for FY19, $3,000. So are we adding an additional $3,000 to make a $6,000 budget for this line item?
Thank you for your question. Vicki? Ed, you can stay there. Ed? Ed's ready. Pack you up.
Yes, that would be an additional $3,000 to what was currently budgeted, because it's pretty much, what's left in there now is $251, and we've only been through pretty much half the year.
That answer your question?
I'd have to refer to the Board of Health on that.
Ben? And could you paraphrase the question so everybody can hear?
The question was, why do we, correct me if I'm wrong, is why do we have to double the budget, add three grand to it? Is that correct? The good news is everyone's becoming more and more aware of the Sharps program, which we're one of the few communities in this area that provides free Sharps disposal for its citizens. And by doing this, we protect the highway department guys at the landfill. People, you don't, in a lot of other communities, you're going to see people putting their Sharps in soda bottles, Gatorade bottles, stuff that's not approved, containers for disposal. By providing free containers to the citizens, they come to the Board of Health or the Health Department, they get the free Sharps containers, and then they bring them back, and we dispose of them at no cost. So it's preventing dangerous ways from going into the waste stream. So the more popular it gets, the more people use it. So obviously, it's working if you're running out of money for it.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? If anybody has any questions or comments, go right up to the mic.
Jana Kane, 83 Glendale Road. Do we know that for sure that only Southampton residents are coming in and taking the free containers and returning them? Do we monitor that at all, if the word is out?
Okay. Question, Ben?
I don't believe we're checking IDs and addresses to hand out Sharps containers.
That answer your question? Okay. Anybody else? Comments, questions? We're going to vote. Motion under Article Sixteen, simple majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Sixteen passes by majority. Mayor, a motion for Article Seventeen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $583 from the Hampshire Council of Government expense account to the treasurer's software sup-
of Government Expense account to the Treasurer's Software Support Expense account.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded now. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Last year, when we were compiling the FY '19 budget, we had estimates from the software company as to what we could potentially have as a bill for FY '19. And this Treasurer's Software Support went over, and this is just covering the deficit for the different software programs that the Treasurer uses. And again, we are taking this from a line item that is not going to be used this year, so we're staying within our current FY '19 budget.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. The article, the motion under Article 17. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 17 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $14.71 from the Hampshire Council of Government's Expense account to the Pine Valley Planning Commission Expense account.
Thank you. Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Again, this was one of those items where we budgeted based on what the actual was from previous years and did not have an exact figure at that moment in time when we did our budget. So this particular line item for Pine Valley Planning is short. $14.17. Again, this is coming from a line item that we won't be using this year, so we are still staying within our same budget.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 18. Simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $2,500 from free cash to an extended illness account per PPPB policies to fund the leave for the Council on Aging van driver, COA van driver for up to 12 weeks.
Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Let's pull a chair up right up to the mic.
People always tell me I should wear sneakers to this meeting. Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road. The current driver for the COA is on leave. He had an illness. And per the PPP policy, we have our own disability where we pay employees 75% of their current salary for up to 26 weeks for when they're out on leave. The current COA budget does not have any money in it to pay the van driver. Their budget is strictly salaries for the assistant and the director and expenses. Normally, this driver gets paid out of a grant, but the grant will not let us pay disability because he won't be driving the van out of this grant. But, you know, per our PPP policies that the town has approved, we need to be able to pay this gentleman those monies. And by creating this new account, we can keep track of people going forward and when they are out on disability and determine if that's the best route the town wants to go for.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak at all? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 19. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 19 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer slash appropriate $2,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to the ambulance maintenance account to cover repairs to the ambulances.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The fire chief is looking to establish an account specifically for repairs for ambulances so that we can keep track of this going forward as, you know, he can better budget for items like this in the future. And this comes from the receipts that we receive for ambulance fees when people from the insurance companies that pay us for when we go out on calls.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 20. Simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 20 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $2,000 from fire department expenses to the fire department Fire Truck Maintenance account to cover repairs to the fire trucks.
Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road. This is following with the previous article in that the fire chief, you know, wishes to establish an account where we can keep track of where, you know, and how often we're repairing our fire trucks. So then when it comes time to be able to have to buy a new fire truck, we have all that information kept separate from his regular expenses. So, you know, we can use that information going forward for that particular purpose. This particular item is a transfer, so he's staying within his budget within the fire department expenses. He just wants to be able to split it out on a separate line item.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 21. Simple majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article 21 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $27,000 from operating stabilization to Highway Department MS-4 Stormwater Management Expense account to cover the costs required for required work to meet the town's MS-4 stormwater permit.
Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and we need a two-thirds majority in this. Who would like to address this, please?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. This money is, as it states in the article, to remain in compliance with our permit, our federal permit for stormwater discharge.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 22. All, two-thirds majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Counters, please? All those in favor of the motion under Article 22, please raise your hands and your cards and hold them high. This group can put your hands down and you keep yours up. Okay. Everybody put their hands down. Twenty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. That's why we do it out loud.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. All those opposed, please raise your hand and your cards. All those opposed, please raise your hands with your cards. No hands? Okay. And for you, none? Zero. Okay. The motion for Article 22 passes 60 to 1 by majority, meeting our two-thirds majority. Motion for Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $5,000 from Unemployment Expense account to the Health Director Wage account to fund the position through the remaining of the year.
Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Okay.
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. On July 1st, 2018, the Massachusetts Pay Equity Act became effective and became law. This act requires employers to pay similar wages for similar job functions where the job duties, education, training, and experience are similar or equal. The Board of Health requested that I compare the building commissioner, health director job descriptions, required duties, and education, training, and experience levels under this new law. In my role as town administrator, I work very closely with KP Law, our town council. As this being a new act or new law, there is not a lot of track, the record, or history on it. Our town council helped me through the Attorney General's Guide to look at these two job descriptions, the statutory requirements for the two jobs, and compare them. I found that the two jobs were really, were more similar than different and more similar than the pay difference, the hourly pay difference between the two positions. Once I came to that decision from the analysis, I also worked with the town council to try to identify what that pay difference on a percentage basis should be. My final analysis was that the health director for the current individual with the level of experience, education compared to our current building commissioner should be 87% of what an hourly wage would be for that. So once I made that analysis, I reported that back to town council, to the Board of Selectment, and to the Board of Health. So both this article and the next one, although two different funding sources, would put us in compliance and actually fund this position for the year at a level that is the hourly rate which I came up with and for the 32 hours per week that the, our human resources or PPP has on the PCF as a requirement for the health director's position.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the motion of this article?
Maureen Grodin, Nate Sherrillane. Not speaking specifically in opposition to whether we should be following state law and whether the wage change actually is necessary in this particular case, but I trust what Ed Gibson said with our attorney's advice. In 2015, the wage line for the Health Department was $25,948. In 2016, it went up to $37,067. And in 2017, it went up to $46,753, down a little bit in last year, $44,000. That's a 57% increase in the wage line for the Health Department wages. And I'd like to know why the, this increase, if it's necessary, doesn't, can't come out of the Board of Health expenses as opposed to free cash? The Board of Health Department.
Thank you. Who would like to answer that?
Ben Hogan, 73 Gilbert Road, Board of Health Chair. Our current expense account is $3,000 a year to run the entire department. We currently have $1,900 left, so that would, it's, I mean, we can't cover $5,000 with a $3,000 budget. That just is mathematically impossible.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Again, I'm not speaking, it's Maureen Grodin, Sherrillane. I'm not speaking to whether or not we have an obligation to follow state law. My, my issue is that the wage line item for this department has increased extremely high in a very short amount of time. We also have a town of 6,000 people, and no town of our size has the employees in this department. Most departments have either a health agent or the Board of Health that actually does the inspections and stuff. So I just need to know from the Board of Health, I just need assurances from the Board of Health that they're monitoring the town's money.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes, we are monitoring what we spend, but this is to comply with state law. So it's kind of, our hands are tied. That's why we're coming to the town, if we had the money in our account to fund it. And then, I mean, just to speak on if we're two people, I mean, one of the, the law does state a quote from an employer who is paying a wage differential in violation of this section, which town administrator and legal counsel did recognize we are in violation, shall not reduce the wages of any employee solely in order to comply with this section. So we can't take wage items, a wage line from another employee in our department to fund it for another employee if we're found in violation, which we were found in violation by our town council.
Thank you.
Jana Kane, Glendale Road. I guess my only question to the Board of Health is that a town our size, is it normal for a town our size to have both a director and a health agent on staff?
Just stay on topic. This isn't about how many people work for the Board of Health. This is for about a employee that works for the Board of Health that we believe we were in violation of the Pay Equity Act that came into effect July 1st. So going forward, yes, we're going to have to do a lot of creative work to figure out how to move forward, but for now, this is, we're here about the inequality in pay.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Thank you.
Tom Livingston, Palmeri Meadow Road. Both Article 23 and 24 are basically to do the same thing. I'd like to know why the-
Well, we really try to stay under the umbrella of one article, but you can get an explanation from Ed. Ed?
Actually, my question is-
Oh. Sorry?
My question is why the Finance Committee recommended one but not recommended the other when both were needed to do-
All right, we're not getting into the next one. We have to stay in one article. When that is voted on, then we'll get into the next one.
Okay.
Thank you. Fair question, though.
Julianne Polakowski, 8 Gilbert Road. Were any other departments evaluated, or was it just the Health Department? Because are we opening this up to every department in the town? I mean, if this passes, are other departments going to come up and say, well, we want more money, too?
Thank you. Question? Ed?
All that was requested was to compare the Health Director to the building commissioner's position, and that was what done. Is it possible that in the future, someone else may come forward and say, this position we feel is not being paid equitably under this act and that those have to be compared? Yes, it is.
Can I answer your question? Thank you. He was next.
John Lumbra, 95 Glendale Road. I have a question, I think for the-
Dress it to me.
I have a question for the town administrator. If this doesn't pass, is another solution to reduce the number of hours and increase the wage to meet the guidelines?
Ed? Ben? Kind of reiterate your question, please?
Is it possible to increase the wage and reduce the hours? Any, any type of reducing hours is considered a potential retaliation. So it has to stay. You can't reduce hours. You can't reduce benefits to try to stay in the, within there. So I mean, that can be considered retaliation under the law.
Thank you. That answer your question, sir? Okay.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. Mr. Moderator, I'll direct my question to you, but I wonder how the Finance Committee concluded that they recommended this for Article, specifically for Article 23.
We'll have somebody from the Finance Committee go to the mic. Actually, stay at your table and... It's okay, Vicki. It's already... Address your answer to me.
I need the question repeated, please.
Okay, please, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Specifically to Article 23, why did the Finance Committee recommend this, agree to it?
Thank you. Name and address.
Jonathan Labrie, Valley Road. We had...
A little closer. Thank you.
We actually had recommended this one because it wasn't, we didn't agree with, we agreed that taking this money from the unemployment expense account was okay for a one-time deal.
Okay. Let me answer your question. All right. Anybody else?
April West, 54 Strong Road. Mr. Moderator, do we know what the hourly rate is times 32 hours so that we know what the new budget line item is for this position?
I'll have somebody behind you answer that.
The hourly rate would be $28.59 per hour.
That answer your question?
I didn't bring my calculator. What does that mean, a year?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part of it. Somebody want to do the math? Vicki? Vicki Morrow's doing the math under no pressure.
28.59, right? Yeah.
Roughly, somebody, Vicki, can you go on to the mic and announce that? Can't Siri do these things? I'm gonna try my Siri.
Vicki Morrow, Palmeroy Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The annual salary, based on the figure that Ed Gibson gave, 28.59 for 32 hours a week for 52.2 weeks a year, is $47,756.74.
Thank you. That answer your question? Okay, good. Seeing nobody at the mic, we're gonna vote. Simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please signify by raising your hands and your cards. I was too close to call. Okay, this side, put your hands down. This side, keep 'em up. Everybody put 'em down?
I know, exactly, exactly.
17.
Repeat, please.
17.
17?
Yes.
24.
24. Everybody put your hands down. Okay, put 'em down?
16.
41 to 28, the ayes have it. This motion under Article 23 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 24, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $10,629.01 from the operating stabilization account to the health director wage account to fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak in favor of this motion?
While the reasoning in general is the same as the previous article, in this particular case, the Town Accountant and I had looked through the existing budget and what had been spent, and while for the previous article, we were able to locate $5,000 which could be transferred under the existing budget, at this point in time through this year, we could not see forward any other accounts that we knew were $10,629 may be transferred from, not knowing what the rest of the year may bring. So in this particular case, the only other place that we could find money at this point in time was to transfer it from the operating stabilization account, which is a two-thirds majority vote. We would have preferred if we could identify to transfer within the existing budget, but we were not able to, and to stay in compliance with the Pay Equity Act, this was our secondary source.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition?
Mr. Moderator, Matt Rowland, 16 Mountain Road, speaking as a voter. I do not think it is fiscally prudent to be utilizing operating stabilization funds which basically amount to free cash to fund an ongoing budget item that we're gonna be responsible for into the future. I believe the Department of Revenue in the past has advised our town on this use of funds. My opinion for the rest, for the remainder of this fiscal year, the Board of Health needs to operate within their budget, just like all of the rest of the town departments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Tammy Walunas, 298...
A little closer, Tammy.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. Can someone explain, Maureen had pointed out that the actual pay raises, or the pay amounts, the yearly, annual amounts, being $44,000, the last one, and now this new rate would be $48,000. Why is the $5,000 that we just approved not cover, and we need an additional $10,000?
Okay. Who would like to answer that question? Somebody grab a mic and answer.
The raise was for, some of the difference was with the health agent, I believe, is that correct? It was for the health agent. So we do, we were running up until now, we had two people under the same line item for salary.
That answer your question? Thank you.
Sharon Solakowski, Kylene Circle, Finance Committee. First, we just want to say that when we did not recommend, it was only because of where the source of the funds was coming from. That was the not recommending. We did not have all of the information when we recommend, or when we didn't recommend, we didn't know why this money was going to be needed. Tonight, we were given the full explanation of why this increase was going to be taking place, why the salary changed. So the Finance Committee has changed, and we do now recommend the funds.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions? Seeing none, we're gonna vote. We need two-thirds majority for approval. All those in favor of the article, motion under Article 24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Counters, please. All those in favor of the motion on Article 24, please raise your hand with your card
15.
Repeat?
15.
15?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, put your hands down.
19.
19. Put your hands down.
20.
20?
20.
The motion for Article 24 fails. May I have a motion for 25, please?
We're gonna pass over 25.
34 ayes, 40 are no's. So I need a motion for 25, please.
We're passing on 25.
We're taking no action?
No action.
All right. Motion made to take no action, do I hear a second?
Second.
No action being taken on Article 25. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. So no action will be taking on Article 25. May I hear a motion for Article 26, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $6,000 from community preservation funds to the Edwards Library to continue and expand online access of Southampton's historical materials available online to the public. Said some to be transferred from Community Preservation Surcharges Historical Preservation Account.
We have a tradition where the chair of the Community Preservation Committee reads the motion for community preservation projects. I was a little sleep on the wheel. A motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have motion made and seconded. Virginia A. Hart, would you like to speak?
Virginia A. Hart, 27...
A little closer to the mic, please.
27 Fomer Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. It's fine if somebody else wants to read it.
Teamwork.
Yes. Barbara Golden would have liked to have been here tonight to explain, that's the librarian, but she has been called out of town because of a family death. So she's leaving it up to me. We have been funding the library with small grants for a number of years to sort, preserve, and put online our historical documents that are held by the library, and they're almost And they are also working to get, they've got a grant from an individual to get it onto their own, the historical, onto their own domain, so that when you go to look up the historical documents, or photographs, or whatever, you will not get pops anymore. And they need to just finish this project.
Thank you. Anyone who would speak in opposition? Questions? Answers? Comments? Seeing none, we're gonna vote. A motion on Article 26, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 26 passes by unanimously. Our last motion, please, and what we're going to do is we're going to take a few-minute break. Everybody stay put. We're gonna pull the screen down for a PowerPoint presentation. All right, we're back. We're back. Somebody want to read the motion for Article 27, please? Matt, are you reading it?
All right, we're gonna start here again. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow a sum of money, $1,600,000 to replace each street bridge in the town of Southampton. Said funds to be used for construction, fees, and permits, engineering, temporary easements, or any other eligible costs associated with the construction of the new bridge and the demolition of the existing bridge, and to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore provided however that the appropriation authorized here under shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of so-called Proposition 2 1/2 Dead Exclusion under General Laws, C 59, Section 21(c), and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 9, or any other general...
Well, that's good. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and we're setting up the PowerPoint presentation.
I can't believe they got me in the audience and asked me to come up here and talk. And I dressed up tonight for this. I left a hat at home. This is one of those presentations that I put together for the Governor's Office relative to a grant for the East Street Bridge, so I sent... to a grant for the East Street Bridge. So I sent it to the Board of Selectmen saying, hey, if you guys need any parts of it, feel free. I didn't know that meant that I was volunteered to speak on it. No, it works, they don't hear me.
Yeah, it's on.
This one here resonate a little more?
Oh, much more.
Somebody's turned up the gain on this one.
We have five minutes per speaker. We know this is going to go 10 minutes. All those in favor extending five minutes to 10 minutes for the speakers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you got 10 minutes. Thank you.
I got two minutes.
Whoever come back on.
Okay, you're going to forward it? Okay. All right. A number of years ago, the Board of Selectmen set a priority in town to take and have the East Street Bridge reconstructed. This bridge is in sad, to poor, shape. So one of the things we worked on was to apply for a grant to try to fund this project. Go ahead, hit it. Scroll down, there you go. One of the issues about the East Street Bridge is the fact that this bridge is on a major corridor for Southampton. It provides a transportation route from the center of town to Westfield, Hoy Oak, and East Hampton. The loss of this bridge, or just minimizing the use of this bridge, will have a major impact in our community. This was part of the materials that went forward to the Boston Group for Funding. The other thing that was out there was the fact that we have a railroad track that we've been discussing for 25, 30 years, about making a greenway, bicycle path in there. And this bridge would be part of that also, because if that goes forward down the road, no pun intended, it's also going to increase foot and bicycle traffic on East Street. There is no sidewalk on that bridge. Another part to the problem is, if you look at where that bridge is located, we have over here, Labrie Field. And Labrie Field, even though it has spyware, is also increasing our pedestrian traffic and our children taking and using strong road in East Street. Again, there's no sidewalk on this bridge. It's basically a funnel and putting everybody in the middle of the road. To give you an idea how old the bridge is, we pulled this from the archives. This is actually what the cars looked like back when that bridge was designed. It gives you a good appreciation of just how old it is, and how traffic has changed. Randall, don't laugh, this could be your next truck. But it gives you just an appreciation of just how old that structure is out there. Go ahead. Southampton back then had 1,000 people. Back then, there was one school bus that picked us all up to go to school. The decking on that bridge is constantly being exposed every time we have a frost cycle. The highway department's forever patching this thing. And if you look at the guardrails, roll it down further. You can actually see the guardrails are missing. And if you're a brave soul and you want to step out on that bridge, take and just grab the concrete, you'll find it just crumbles in your hands. Now, you can just picture this stopping a car if somebody skidded off the side. Go ahead. Keep going. Robert will throw me out pretty quick here. So the bridge is a key link to the community. And it needs to be basically redone just for economic growth for our community. Keep going. I think that's it, that's it. So basically, what it comes down to is, I don't know, do you want me to talk about the grant, or you want to get into that? Yeah, part of the problem is, is East Street in and of itself has been designed by about 25% for reconstruction. But it became very apparent to the Select Board and everyone else that until that bridge is resolved, there's no sense in trying to push building East Street over again, because we're just going to funnel everything back to that old bridge. We applied for a grant, we were very fortunate, we did get a grant for a million dollars. We were sort of led astray with our engineer as to what the cost was going to be. And that's the reason we're here tonight, asking for this additional money. At this point in time, we have a million dollars set aside for this project. At this meeting tonight, and at the town election, if it's approved, we can move forward with this project. If this project does not move forward, then probably come this June, July, that million dollars is going to roll back to the Commonwealth. And then Southampton will be looking at facing rebuilding this bridge for 100% of cost. So right now, we're looking at 50, 60% being paid by the Commonwealth. You guys want to touch anything else? All right, I guess I'm done.
All right, we have one speaker. Does anybody want to speak in opposition?
I'm not speaking in opposition. Cindy Palmer, 71, Lunde Road.
All right, you have to speak in opposition, then anyone who wants to speak, ask questions, come right up to the mic. Go ahead, you're on.
Okay, two questions, Mr. Moderator, to whomever can answer them. One is, Mr. Charlie just said that there were some issues with the original quote. And I wonder, is there any compensation for the misdirection of the original quote and the engineer that came forward? And I wonder where that stands, and do we have any recourse to, because we went forward originally with the idea that it wasn't going to cost 2.6 million. So that's one question. And I can wait for an answer to that, or I can ask my next question.
Let's ask, answer the question, first question, then you can ask the second one.
Is there any recourse on the fact that quote had to be revised?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. Actually, to help out with this, the firm was actually embarrassed very much, and they did perform some free work for the town on an additional analysis of that bridge work.
Answer your first question? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, you have a second question. You said, go right ahead. No, she's first.
So my second question is, is there any other potential source of funding besides this bond that we are voting on? And I'm looking specifically at mass.gov, Small Bridge Repair. Does it, did anybody look at this? Up to $500,000. Happened to see it on the news the other day that another town got lots of money for it. Have we been looking at other options?
Thank you.
We have looked at all our other options. The Small Bridge Repair Program will do bridges up to 20 feet in length or span. This is well over 40 feet, so it does not meet that criteria. But we have rattled all the trees there are, and at this point, we are looking to leverage the million-dollar grant and hopefully fund the remainder of the bridge rebuilding project through the 1.6 million dollars through borrowing and our taxpayers. If we don't do this, probably maybe four or five years down the road, we'll be looking at 2.6 million plus inflation on our, all on our own. So we're looking to leverage that million dollars at this point.
Thank you. Then answer your second question?
Yes.
Good, okay, who's next?
Steve Barooki, 187 East Street, Southampton. My question is this. With the new bridge and the sidewalk, how is it going to affect the road to Hoy Oak, or the sidewalk to Hoy Oak? And the plans for the sidewalk to Hoy Oak that were proposed many years ago when Labrie Field was proposed?
I can answer that, but I don't want to.
I really would like to know, but my vote depends on it.
I know, you're going to get an answer. I'm just saying I don't want to be the one to answer. Ed, you can get the mic and say from the... Okay, separate project, so no...
Is that project still on? Is that project dead?
Randall, please come in and answer that. Randall Kemp, our Highway Superintendent, will give you an answer. And you can raise the mic.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So basically, this project began in 2005. It's at 25% design. In talking to the Select Board, they didn't want to push back, push forward the pedestrian-friendly accommodations of the sidewalk until we addressed the bridge, because basically you'd be funneling people onto that bridge. And I wouldn't want to be responsible if somebody was hit if we went forward in that manner. So the design is currently at 25%, and it's at a pause. We will continue that design work once we address the bridge. That could be, design work can be done through Chapter 90 monies, so not out of the general fund. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. To answer your question, no, direct me, answer your question.
No, it doesn't, because the thing is, I'm looking forward to having a five-foot front yard with a six-foot sidewalk, if this goes through.
Summarizing, the bridge project is first, and then they're going to address the East Street. Yes. But right now, we're talking only about the bridge. Next person. Thank you, Randall.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. So this is an attempt to be 100% transparent with the townspeople of Southampton. The original plan was to do the entire East Street. So from College Highway, first was going to be the bridge and/or whatever order it was going to be, College Highway to the bridge, the bridge, and then the bridge to County Road, because the road needs to be done over. And so what happened was, we applied for a grant from the state, and we were told by the engineers that it was a million dollars to repair the bridge. And so we had a big celebration in Boston, and Charlie and Jim had gone, and we got a million dollars from the state of Massachusetts to repair the bridge. And then we were told after the fact that, oh, I'm sorry, it's actually 2.5 million. So we actually talked to our attorneys to ask if there was any recourse for this bad information. And we were between a rock and a hard place. We looked for funding from lots of different places, as Mr. Gibson said, and basically came up without any additional funding. And so they did do some work to help, because they did feel badly about it. So we decided that before we give back 1 million dollars to the state of Massachusetts, which would be obligated to do by June 30th, we come to the voters and say, do you want to bond this, bond this, so it happens at 2.5 million? So basically, that's what you're being asked, because we didn't want to give up 1 million dollars back to the state if you felt strongly enough that this project needs to move forward with at least it being partially funded. So that's why we're here today.
Thank you.
Susan Sussman, 9, Golden Circle. It sounds like that we're almost being threatened with the fact that if we don't move ahead with this, then we lose the state money, never to be found again. So my question is, if we don't do this for another five years, is there anything that says we cannot apply again to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for assistance? That's my question. My comment is, it's been put forth in this presentation that this is vital for the economic growth of our area. However, I think it's vital for the economic growth of this town is to invest in some commercial tax base, so that we don't have to keep putting forth a Prop Two and a Half override for the homeowners to keep paying for everything that comes up every year.
Thank you. Who wants to answer the question? Who's answering the question? No, Margaret Waite. We've got to have somebody answer the question. There's a question on the floor.
So to simply answer your first question, the answer to your question is, is we will lose the million dollars by June 30th. There is, there's nothing that guarantees grant money down the line. There's no chance, you know, you run the risk of whether or not grants are even available down the line, how much they are, what they're specifically for, if they're even for this type of infrastructure project. So right now, we have the million dollars. We were lucky enough to get it and earn it in the first place. As you know, these projects are just ever going to increase over time. And I think the thought process of bringing this here to town meeting is, wouldn't it be nice to have 40, 50% of the funds paid for by the state, rather than shouldering the entire burden, which is, just so you know, and no pun intended, what's coming down the road on this bridge? You know, if you look at a town like Amherst up north, they physically closed the bridge for years.
There's one point on the question that hasn't been answered, and that was, is the town eligible? Will they be blackballed to reapply?
Well, I mean, we don't know the answer to that.
Well, that was the question.
Yeah, we don't know the answer to that, because we don't know what grants are going to be available in the future.
Can I answer your question as best we can? Thank you. Yes.
I moved to Southampton back in 1941. I remember the bridge as it was then. I remember the bridge when we had the flood of 1955, and it got battered, but it withstood. And now, looking at it, it's very sad condition. I am strongly of the opinion that we should do something as soon as we possibly can. And I almost wonder if we're going to have some floods this spring from all the rain and snow up north of us.
Well, that we don't know.
It's a pretty sad old bridge.
Thank you. Sir, Stan, a sweatshirt, you're standing for a while. You're next.
Tom Livingston, Palmero Meadow Road. Couple of questions. One, one again had to do, had we gone with the, what is now the quote of 2.6 million, and I guess that's to replace as opposed to repair the bridge, right?
Yes.
Would the state, does the state fund up to that amount? Because I know you went, you went with, I know, look at you, thank you. We went with 1 million, the state said yes to 1 million. Oops, it's now 2.6. So would they, would they fund up to 2.6 in a future date if we went back with that amount?
Your question's been answered. There's no way to predict what the state would do.
Okay. I have a couple other questions.
Yep.
Okay, my second question is, has there been a state inspection done on the bridge? Does the state do that kind of inspection to grade the condition of the bridge? We saw that their pavement is crumbling, and some guardrails need to be replaced.
There has, there has been an inspection, and Randall, behind you, will answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Give him the microphone.
Yes, I believe the last inspection was October of last year.
And the grade or the score of the bridge?
Five, five, five.
Five, five, five?
Five, it was five, five, five.
It's a five, what's the high, high score is?
Ten.
All right, we need the mic. That's why we got to look here. Go ahead. Jim, right here, look at me.
Okay, yeah, the bridge is rated, and it's on a scale of one to 10. The bridge is five, five, five. The five being the upper part, the main, then the deck, and then the embuppments. And that's the way they rate it. And back to the grants.
Well, no, we're answering your question.
Well, there was a question prior to, I was going to answer, but...
He's got more questions.
Okay. So yes, it has been rated.
We need answers to questions, and then speak independently. Yes?
My last question has to do, the Prop Two and a Half Dead Exclusion is like a temporary override. And so I'd like to know, what are the specifics of the dead exclusion? How long, and what would be the, what's the proposed length of this, and what would be the schedule for our property tax increases?
Thank you. Going to have Town Account, Vicky Morrow, answer that question.
Based on some projections, Vicky Morrow, Town Account, Palmero Meadow Road, that we received from our financial advisor, it is probably in the town's best interest to borrow this money for 20 years, which would be a 16 cent per thousand increase in your rate for those 20 years, per thousand dollar of house valuation. So if you had a $300,000 house, it would be $46 a year for 20 years. So each year would be, and that's based on the current valuation of our entire town. So it's going to be, it'll change over the next 20 years based on the valuation of our houses, but current... houses. But current valuation and the current projected percentage interest, it would be 16 cents per thousand for a 20-year bonding.
Did I answer your question? Great, sir.
Jim LeBree, Gun Road. Back to the grant. When we applied to MassWorks Grants, yes, we got some bad information from an engineer. It was 1.3, 1.4 is what he was estimating. The MassWorks Grant maxes out at 1 million. We couldn't have gotten more than 1 million regardless. So even if his estimate was at 2.6, MassWorks Grant, 1 million max. So we went looking for a lot of other funding. We went to the MPO. Charlie was on the MPO board, Massachusetts Planning Organization, or Metropolitan Planning Organization. We went there to talk about getting funding, the balance for the bridge from them. We have a bridge that's a 5.5. And they looked at us and they said, "Well, that's not bad enough yet." Unfortunately, it looks really bad, but the bridge is a 5. Until it hits 3, that's crisis. 4, they consider funding, but 3 is a crisis, is what I believe they were telling us. So when the bridge, if it goes down to a 4, we, it could be closed. I mean, at that point, now it's up to the engineer who inspects it. If we let this million dollars go and we roll the dice that we can get a grant down the road and that bridge, that bridge goes backwards a little faster than we anticipate, it could be closed and it'd be an inconvenience for the town. So the Select Board decided to put this forward to the townspeople to say, "Look, we have $1 million. Do you want to come up with a debt exclusion for the 1.6 balance? Or if you voted no, then we roll the dice, possibly another grant. Maybe the MPO would get involved, but there's no guarantees." So that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Ben Hogan, 73 Gilbert Road. Two things. One, totally in favor of this. I'm a full-time firefighter in a neighboring community. And we have a bridge that's separate, in our city that I work in. And because of the poor condition, the state actually limited what emergency vehicles we can drive over it. So some of the town, some of the houses that we respond to in case of a fire have added a 10-minute, almost a 10-minute response time for certain vehicles. So if we let it get worse, they can put restrictions on what can drive over the bridge. And everyone knows, East Street is a main line for the emergency vehicles. And then with another question, I haven't read the language on the grant. With 24 failing, Article 24 failing, if the AG finds our town in violation of a civil rights law, does that exclude us from the grant? Because I know some grant language says if you're in violation of civil rights laws, then the grant money can get taken away or suspended.
Somebody answer that question? We don't have an answer.
Point of order. That article is not subject to what our discussion is at this point.
Yes, that's true. I accept your point of order.
The answer, the answer is tenuous. The answer is very tenuous as to how this town voted.
The person sitting down with the blacktop, you're next, before the gentleman?
Don't like to do this.
I can't hear you.
Don't like to do this. Judy Keener, 168 County Road. I can understand a mistake, but 100% mistake by a reputable, I assume, engineering firm. Do, I've heard him ask, do we have any recourse? Apparently, they've done some additional work for us without charging, I believe was the comment. I'm getting off topic here. I'm nervous.
You're good.
Reputable engineering firm should have insurance. Do we have any recourse for omissions and errors that might have occurred? 100% is a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to answer that? About the insurance? Ed Gibson. Somebody want to answer that?
Town Council did review this for the town. And the Town Council's opinion was that what the engineering firm did under what their contract was, was definitely sufficient for the misjudgment in the estimate.
So no recourse. Answer your question? All right. Sir?
Bob Coz, 181 College Highway. I think we, a proper question to ask here is, in this $2.6 million, what are the design characteristics? For example, is the capacity of that bridge going to be increased significantly, allowing for tractor-trailer traffic, for instance, to go through a National Historic District, East Street? So what, what are we going to get for our $2.6 million in terms of bridge capacity and ability to handle maybe not so desirable traffic?
I need an answer. What kind of bridge are we going to get?
That's an excellent question that I don't think we currently have an answer for. The design is underway. I, I don't know, I don't know if we're, we have limits for tractor-trailer trucks now on that bridge.
There is. There is. But I don't have... Is that going to be increased? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know the answer, Bob.
Wait, there's no answer to your question, sir. We don't know the capacity of the new design bridge.
My assumption, I shouldn't put my assumption. My assumption, it will be, the capacity will be equal to the one that's there today. It will be better.
It'll be better.
All right. I haven't seen any of the design specs so far.
Okay. You're answering a question? Yes.
Typically, it's been my experience, when you design something like this and you're involved in it, you're looking for a minimum of a 50-year life. The last bridge was built in 1920-something. It's left, it's reached its life expectancy way beyond. So the design capacity should increase. What I've been seeing for preliminary design work has been an open span with no pillars in the river, so that it doesn't inhibit the amount of water flow going through there. It's a better construction. But you have to appreciate the fact, these are all preliminary designs. We don't get into the final design work, and now I'm really speaking out of class here, until the funding is accepted and we move forward. We don't have 100% design on that bridge at this point.
Thank you. Dan, answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Next person.
Kathy LeBree, Gun Road. I feel that disappointment and people wanting recourse with the design firm error does not change the fact that the bridge is failing. And when we look at the side guardrails that can crumble in your hand, it's frightening that any of us, any of our children driving, could go off the edge, plummet down, and be killed. Or police fire thereout when the weather's very slippery. It's a very serious, dangerous situation. So regardless of the price, we have a million-dollar grant. We'd love for the bridge not to cost that much money, but fact is fact. And if that's the cost of the bridge, that's the cost of the safety of our community.
Thank you.
Janet Kane, Glendale Road. Just for clarification, we're voting tonight to put this on the ballot in May, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next, well, one more. You're standing there, you've got one more. Turn at the mic.
Yeah, Tom Livingston, Palmero Middle Road. I'm surprised at a 2.6 million, that we really don't know a lot of particulars about this bridge.
Well, the answer that I heard and you heard is that we don't, they don't get into details until all the funding is in, then there's specifications to get the...
Well, I, I understand, I understand that. But when, when I get a quote to do some work on a house, I get more than just, we're just going to, you know, add a room. There is particulars. And for 2.6 million, I would think that we would know more than just, it's a free span over the river.
Charlie, going to have you answer that question.
Just to qualify, I've been out of this now for about six months, so I'm trying to catch up with everything. But I think I'm going to read to you some information, and I think it's going to be helpful for everybody. The bridge inventory load capacity rating is 10 tons, which is not adequate to the capacity right now, which is, should be over 20 tons. So that gives you an appreciation of just how outdated it is. The bridge is listed as functionally obsolete, which means it no longer meets current criteria for structural or geometric designs. I could go on further with all this.
Well, no need to go on, but his question is more specific. I think we, we need a philosophical answer from you now as to why his answer for specifics isn't available, knowing it's going to be $2.6 million.
We get a preliminary memorandum from the engineers, based on their expertise as to what their projected cost is going to be based on the design of a proposed bridge. They gave us three or four concepts in this, and the bottom number was 2.6 as the overall cost to do this. They're doing this based on their professional standards.
Okay.
We can't do this finite engineering until funding's required, but it gives us from them that information.
All right. Dan, answer your question. Thank you. We're ready to vote? We don't need, you want to get a question, comment?
I have a better answer from a previous question, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
I think it's better. So in the design contract, the plans will be prepared in accordance with Mass DOT standards, combined with the special provisions in estimate, and submitted to Mass DOT for a Chapter 85 structural adequacy review. Review comments will be reconciled prior to producing the final plan set. So the state will look at it to make sure that it's adequate.
Understand. Right, thanks for reading the specs and the contract. We're going to vote. Two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 27, please indicate by raising your cards. Or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. It passes unanimously. Meeting to two-thirds majority requisition. I called it a voice vote. We're going to do this over again. I retract the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Counters, please. My bad for mixing up the signal. Okay, lower you.
34. 27.
27. All those, all those opposed, raise your hands, your cards.
4.
61 to 4. Motion passes by majority, meeting our two-thirds requirement. That concludes our business for the night. I want to take a motion to now dissolve the special town meeting.
So move.
All in favor, second? All in favor? Opposed? This special meeting is dissolved. Thank you. Ms. Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, Carl Keener, our deputy town moderator, our Select Board Finance Committee, town accountant, and Ryan Arnold, the Southampton media, thank you for your valued participation. Safe home.